I'd like to call to order District 67 budget hearing, 2017-2018 budget hearing. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Volker?
Here.
Mr. Novotny?
Here.
Mrs. Levert?
Here.
Mrs. Sands?
Here.
Dr. Lemke?
Here.
Mr. Ford?
Here.
Mr. Burkowski?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll start off with public participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? Seeing none, we will move on to the budget hearing. Jen?
All right, thank you. Just want to quickly give an update. This is our final budget presentation. As you recall, we did have a tentative budget that we talked about in June. We're going to go through quickly legal requirements, talk a little bit about our revenue expenditures, and I'm going to focus on that there were changes made between the tentative budget and the budget that's before you tonight. So we're going to talk a little bit about what those changes were and what the impact is. We'll quickly review also what educational facility highlights were included. All right, legal requirements. You've done everything that you need to do in order to adopt your budget for this fiscal year. It's been placed on display. We notified people that it was on display if anyone chose to come inspect it, and you have at least 30 days between your tentative and your final adoption. All right, this is the tentative budget that we talked about a little bit in June. It was $45 million and change, including transfers for revenue, and $52 million in expenditures. Obviously, there was a deficit spend of $7.255 million. As you recall, when I presented that tentative budget, I said there still will be adjustments forthcoming. We did this June 27th. If you recall back to June, the state did not have a budget. We did not know what the school funding model may or may not look like. We didn't have all of our numbers, and I apologize, you really can't see there are green words there that don't come through on the black screen very well. But there were some other things that we were still waiting for answers on in June. So we've gone through each of those things and made some adjustments. Revenue, we had the generous donation from the Spirit towards our Haskins Furniture and Equipment of $250,000, also donation from the Spirit for our Sheridan Playground of $82,000. At the time, we hadn't quite figured out were we going to purchase those as a district and then they were going to reimburse us, so we've made some adjustments. We are paying for them from the district side and working out a reimbursement from the Spirit, so we're going to show that as a revenue and an expense. Transfers among funds, as you recall, we did a debt service extension-based borrow right towards the end of the year. We actually received those funds before June 30th, so we don't need to transfer as much. And you passed a resolution, I think previously, that helped us with that from one fund to another for that. So you'll see the change there. CPPRT, that's Corporate Personal Property Replacement Taxes, those are monies that we receive from the Illinois Department of Revenue. At the time that we made the budget, those final numbers were not known. Ours actually decreased a bit, so we did make that adjustment. And finally, I just wrote state. So the governor did sign into effect on August 31st. It's called the Evidence-Based Funding Model. So that is our school funding model in which we will receive both our general state aid funds and also some remaining categorical funds. So that was actually a big change for this particular budget year. On the expenditure side, at the time that we put the tentative budget on display, we had 13 positions that were still yet to be filled. So they were TBD. When we budgeted for those, we do that based on where we see the current trends and analysis related to not only their salary schedule placement, but also where we would project for their possible health insurance benefits. Those 13 positions were unfilled. In addition, I have additional FTE that arose over the summer. We had additional 1.0 Special Ed Teaching Assistant at Sheridan based on an individual's IEP. I had a .1 increase in art at Everett for scheduling and meeting planning time, and an additional .5 Office Assistant at DPM West. Now, the net of those, although we did pick up just a tad on those 13, we actually budgeted fairly accurately on them, but we did pick up enough that we ended up making no adjustments for any of the new positions. So we were able to cover those with the budget that we had put on display in June. The last piece there is construction. At the time, we didn't have final numbers a little bit on some of the site work installation, final pieces of equipment, so there's been some minor adjustments for that as well. Related to the party, not the big projects. All right, so the final budget, and then I'll actually show you a side, kind of a side-by-side. So the final budget presented tonight has revenues of $44 million and change, expenses of $50.8, and now we're showing a deficit spend of $6.5 or $6.6 million. Where that hits specifically. So you'll see an increase of revenue in the educational fund of $464,000, $488. What we're seeing with the new evidence-based funding model, although in theory we're going to receive very similar amount of dollars on an annual basis in this model, the fact that they still had two outstanding payments from last year will increase our revenue because I certainly didn't put in that I would get a full year's worth plus two outstanding. So now we've made that adjustment. So that's part of that $464. The decrease, $14,000 in operations and maintenance is that decrease in that Corporate Personal Property Replacement Taxes based on the final numbers from the Department of Revenue. And then this was where it gets a little tricky. If you recall, we have those transfers among funds, which shows both as a revenue to the fund that's going to receive it, but then it shows as an expense out of the fund that's making the transfer. So capital projects, the revenue number is tied to the operations and maintenance expenditure because that's that transfer. So we did make adjustments to that. The fact that, one, we got the DCEB funds in, so we didn't need to transfer as much to cover the construction, and also you can see a little bit of the difference is the donations from the Spirit counted as a revenue into the capital projects fund. So again, we didn't need to cover that with other operating funds from operations and maintenance. Capital projects on the expense side increased 106, and that was really related to some of the site prep and also the installation and equipment related to the playground. Looking at it as a comparison year-over-year, revenue increased 2.28%. When we do the comparison numbers, that does not include the transfer line. So it's just really looking at the budget-to-budget and doesn't include the transfers in and transfers out. So you can kind of see where those have increased. On expenditures, we're up 17.42%. Well, of course, there's a 242% increase in capital projects because we went from $2.1 million to $7.5 million basically for all of the facility improvements, and we do have them listed coming up, and also the previously approved construction. You'll see the educational fund just increased 2.14, O&amp;M 11.5, transportation 13.53. Some of those are relational transportation. You did approve an increase in our transportation amount that we would be paying. We did that in the spring. Looks like you have a question.
Yeah, I just want to ask a simple, high-level question to make sure I'm on the same page with you. I realize it's not a P&amp;L, you include capital in this, so if I'm looking at this not including transfers, 2017-2018, we are bringing in approximately $37 million in actual dollars, and we're spending approximately just under $44 million in actual dollars, and included in that is all of the capital projects.
Correct.
Perfect.
You got it. Yep. And so just wanted to give you the breakdown so you can actually see where that 2.28% is in revenue, and you can see it's primarily sitting there in the state, right? So the fact that we're going to be getting a full year of some of our revenue sources from the state, plus they've already made one of their two outstanding payments, so really we're looking right now at five, and they're telling us we're going to get the remaining outstanding, so which they'd sort of like getting six, which would be outstanding. Looking at expenditures from all funds, you can see what the increase is year-over-year. Salaries 3.75%. That includes the addition of those FTE pieces, also any obligations we had related to our contracts or salary schedules. You also had as part of your grand plan, you had the additional hiring of some staff there as well, if you recall, and we'll hit those in a minute. Nothing else really jumps out at us. Supplies are pretty flat. Capital outlay, of course, that's our construction as well that you'll see there. Other tuition transfers, termination, nothing hugely unexpected. Just graphically. Now, when you look at all funds, and I don't always give it to you in an all fund, sometimes we break it down, we talk about the ed fund at the transportation. For this presentation, we put everything together, and you look at 49% across all of our funds are related to salaries, and the 8.54 is related to benefits. Now, you've probably heard us talk a lot about the number being higher as a percentage, and usually that's when we're talking about the ed fund, which is our largest fund. But when you consider the fact that we outsource transportation, for example, that would increase your professional services number and not necessarily your salary and benefits number. All right, some of the things that were included in the budget highlights, we covered these in June, but just to refresh, two additional FTE for special ed teachers related to inclusion, a special ed teacher at DPM, had instructional coaches that are not in this particular budget, but I know that we've talked about, this came right from the district's grand plan. We do have math teaching and learning facilitator and an inquiry teaching and learning facilitator. Those are new positions. We have some professional development dollars built in, some technology upgrades. These are probably a little bit more familiar, but probably not as glamorous. Drinking fountains, roofing, finishing floors, tuck pointing, all of the facility improvements that we talk about as far as our five-year facility plan. Largely, the biggest one there is replacing those boilers. Those are original to the building, if you recall. All right, construction, these are all the previously approved construction, and we've reported out a few times where we are on this. So the Haskins, all the security vestibules and the DPM East side. We did put on there the subtraction for the Spirit donation. We have the Sheridan Playground, test classrooms, and then you see if there's still some placeholders, but total construction of 5.7 net. Summary on this, so our budget is unbalanced. This is not a surprise to anyone. We had very specific planned and previously approved projects related to life safety, construction, and still we remain very financially strong. Fund balance will remain above the policy target of 10%. And what I really should say on that is we're going to talk about a little bit later a fund balance report that talks about the fact that even though we're going to dip down our projection show, we're going to be right back up near our 10% within that range of span of time. And then really, just the next steps, the fiscal year 18 budget now becomes our baseline for our new five-year, and that's really where we are in the cycle. We'll spend time now, in October, updating our five-year. We'll come to the Finance and Ops Committee, and we'll model some new projections with the new information as we prepare for the levy conversation which will occur in November and then December. Happy to answer any questions.
I think it's great work and a really good presentation. It's clear. Thank you. Anyone? I believe that's it. I believe during the regular meeting, we'll be voting on it, if I understand things correctly, which may or may not be the case. Very good. So may I have a motion to adjourn the 2017-2018 budget hearing?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. I will now call back to order the regular meeting of Lake Forest School District 67 Board of Education for September 26, 2017. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Burkowski?
Here.
Mr. Volker?
Here.
Mrs. Levert?
Here.
Mr. Novotny?
Here.
Mrs. Sands?
Here.
Mr. Ford?
Here.
Dr. Lemke?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. At a recent board meeting, the statement, quote, "Always doing what is best for our students" was mentioned, unquote, and the board briefly discussed some of the conflicting forces that our board faces from time to time. That conversation reminded me that a little over two years ago, our board developed a set of core values, and I believe these core values still remain important guideposts for us today. I thought it made sense to take a moment to briefly review those core values, to remind ourselves and everyone in the community the values that are most important to this board. We define three core values. Number one, our board will strive to provide student-centric governance. This means keeping the students at the center of every decision that we make. It sounds simple, but with many other factors pushing and pulling on us, it can easily happen sometimes to forget the students. Our second core value, our board values fiscal responsibility. If students are to be at the center of every decision we make, the impact on taxpayers is not far behind. We're fortunate to live in a community with abundant resources. Responsible stewardship of those resources is something each one of us strongly believes in. Third, our board will provide vision-centric leadership, meaning we will strive to accelerate the achievement of the district vision, mission, and milestones at every turn. The work done to achieve the milestones is largely operational work, which the superintendent drives. However, the board plays an important part in setting priorities and distributing resources, and as such, our decisions can affect the speed at which the milestones are achieved. The work that we did over the past year on what we call the grand plan is an example of this, as is current discussions on classroom transformation, to name one example. I believe that our board is doing a good job keeping these three core values at the forefront of our decision-making process. However, it's easy to forget about them from time to time, especially when the various different pressures are applied to us. Thus, I do think it's important to step back and formally review them periodically. In other news, the renovations at Haskins 2.0, or H2O for short, at DPM West have largely been completed, and our students and staff are actively using that space. For those who have not yet seen it, I encourage you to check it out. We'll be holding our October board meeting in the H2O space, which provides a great opportunity for community members to see the new space. That concludes the president's report.
We now move on to the superintendent's report. Mike?
Thank you. I wanted to show you a couple of videos to begin here, if I could, and I'll point out what to watch for. All right, so this is Mr. McHugh and I in a fourth-grade classroom. A couple of things to look at is check out the furniture, take a look at that, but also it'll be interesting, notice how the students don't respond to our presence, I should say. And that's my finger. So part of this, I wanted to show this for a couple of different reasons, because it illustrates, I'll play it again, it illustrates how much things have changed in the district in the last several years. First, kids are all in groups now. They work in groups from kindergarten right on up through. Increasingly, we still have some work to do on the furniture and on the Deer Path West, but all the furniture here is static. There are hard chairs, but they are round. Another thing that is really different is the number of walkthroughs that the administrators do. We can walk into classes now, and more often than not, the kids don't even look up. They don't notice anything different. They're accustomed to people walking in and out, and in addition to the instruction changing, the focus of the classroom is different. The focus of the classroom is much, much more on the students. Compare that with this, and the types of seating that is here. Notice the different elevations, the movable furniture, the soft seating here. This isn't one of our test classrooms, but this is newer types of furniture that we're having a chance to test drive compared to the other all-hards stuff that is really fixed in place. One of the things that we want to see from any of the furniture that we get is that it moves. You can create different learning spaces within the school environment. There are soft places, and they're also one of the things with this one. If you look at how much movement there is of kids' legs swinging, scooting, swirling, all this other stuff, this is for, this is in the 5-6 building here. What's interesting is the lower you go, the less kids wind up sitting on any of the furniture. The premium in K through 3 is can you get the furniture out of the way? Because the kids want to be on the floor. They want to be in little areas that are like nooks. They want to read under tables if they can. They want to find all these different spaces, and so the more there can be open space, the better for them. So I wanted to show that to illustrate a couple of the things that we're working on with the test classrooms, and also provide an update in the April board meeting. I spoke to the board about Gallup polling, some of the Gallup surveys, survey results that had come back, and one of the questions that I got at that time after the meeting was, okay, well, so what? What does this lead us to? What that's led us to is more and more thinking about our measure for social and emotional well-being in the district, most particularly social and emotional growth, and that we don't have any kind of meaningful measure for that right now, and there's no prospect of anybody coming up with something in the very near future for that. So we're going to try to develop our own. We're either going to develop our own, or we're going to do our darndest to try to develop our own, one of those two things. So we're going to be administering the Gallup Student Poll to grades 6 and 8. Those are the questions about hope and well-being, questions like, do I have a best friend at school? Do I have at least one teacher in my school that makes me hopeful for the future, that inspires me? And we'll get a baseline from that. For grades 5 and 7, another interesting poll that they'll be taking, again from Gallup, will be the Strength Finder Poll. Data from that can also go on our personalized student portrait that where parents can see and then staff can also see. What is the student good at? What are the ways that we can leverage their interests and their abilities all across the curriculum, whether that's math, science, history, English, PE, music, whatever it might be? Every kid is strong in something, and what Gallup's research has demonstrated is that if you focus on leveraging those strengths, you'll get more out of kids, teachers, and employees of every kind. On October 3rd, the board will be holding what is called a fiscal stress test at the Gorton Center at 7 o'clock, 7:00 PM, and that will be the city and the two school districts, 67 and 115, will be jointly holding that meeting, and we'll be looking at how the state finances are affecting each of our organizations. And that concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Questions or comments for the superintendent? Seeing none, we move on to our first public participation. Are there any members of the public who would address, would like to address the board? Seeing none, we move on to reports, fund balance report. Jen?
We covered a little bit of it in the budget hearing, but as you are aware, we do have a board policy that requires a fund balance report to be generated to the board when one of two circumstances occur. Either our fund balance percentage falls below 10% or if it's above 15%. So with a targeted range of 10 to 15, if it's above or below, a report is generated to the board. Interestingly enough, last year when we reported to the board on the fund balance report, we were above the 15%. And in that fund balance report, it talks about if we're above the amount, what our planned intended uses of those funds were for, which, as evidenced by what we've talked about and what we've now seen, we've put a significant amount of investment back into our facilities and to our buildings. So this fund balance report actually is now falling below the 10% for this fiscal year 18 budget. As we mentioned when I did the budget hearing, it is a deficit budget projected to our fund balance to drop to approximately $3.5 million, which would approximately be a 7.97% fund balance. So in that case, it also talks about the fund balance report should tell us how we're going to get back up to our 10 to 15% targeted range. We did extensive modeling before we embarked on those particular construction projects and facility improvements, and we believe just naturally within our five-year financial projection, we will return to that 10 to 15% range. So we're not recommending any additional measures at this time to achieve the actual policy's targeted parameters.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, I've just got a brief comment. Jen's report's very concise right there, but the decision to go below that 10% wasn't taken lightly, and we did a lot of work on that with a lot of pretty conservative projections to make sure we were going to get back to the range we want to get to be at. And, you know, the challenge we have is we've got a bunch of school buildings that are 20th-century school buildings, and we're trying to transform those into 21st-century school buildings for our kids. And that money that's sitting in the fund balance is the taxpayer money, and it's earning nothing. Jen can tell you from the bond investments, it's not doing a whole lot there. It doesn't mean we have to go out and just gorge on everything and make a blatant spend, but, you know, the money's there to be used for our kids, and we worked really hard in the past year to design a plan to enact that. So just fear not.
Relative to the conservative estimates that we did do prior to the spend, now that we do know the budget and how the finances are coming from the state, has that improved? Were we being extremely conservative now, or are we going to get back to 10% quicker than we thought?
Well, you know me a bit. My guess is probably yes, but to answer your question with actual numbers, when we ran that last projection in June, I think June 20th, after the board approved the test classrooms, we were looking at a projected fund balance of, I think, 7.1 in that, and just from what changes we've made this summer and adjustments to the budget, in the end of the year, we're at 7.97. So typically, you will see over time that I'm a little, I'm very conservative, so I usually come in a little under budget on my revenues, and then we typically save a little bit on our expenditures. So I would expect that, yes, we probably would. Those assumptions that we have in, we will review at the Finance and Ops meeting, and I would say they're very conservative.
So Jen, just to make sure I'm right, this is, the 7.97% is what we're anticipating for like next May?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, June 30, 2018.
And then you alluded to before and now that with the five-year projection, though, we recover nicely.
Yes.
So I'm surprised we didn't see the five-year projection, so could you send that to the board to see that graph?
Yeah, it's in the process of being updated with all the new variables, so what I did here is just basically take our over-under and based on pushing forward last year's fund balance to get to the 7.97.
Right, and I'm just saying, I want to see them for the next five years, yeah. And when you told Jeff that we're going to go to Finance and Ops and retalk about the assumptions, you're not talking about the four assumptions we've already said aren't going to move?
Correct.
So you're still going forward, you're going to predict that the state pays 85% of its bills?
Well, I'm probably going to run a few others to entertain as well, because I think it's going to come out differently based on what we're seeing. We also have some different assumptions, some changes I think we're going to see related to the grand plan. So some things that we've talked about as the non-optionals and optionals, all those things will change that five-year outlook.
Yeah, but this is now getting further away from what I thought the idea was, though. Like, we're going to approve a budget tonight, and I thought that we would have a five-year projection with fund balance with these assumptions we agreed to about new construction and CPI and cost shift. Everything would be clear, and that we could say, as of tonight, this is the picture, and not worry about the grand plan and not worry about anything else. It's just the stuff we've already agreed to, this is the picture. Is that not happening?
That has never happened. We have never updated the five-year projection before we've completed our audit, or at least had our audit figures done, which we do not yet, and we always take the current, once we have the adoption of the budget, current fiscal year budget, we roll that over as our baseline assumption. But there's other assumptions and things that will have changed as well. So we're giving you refreshed information. And typically, actually prior to two years ago, you wouldn't see the five-year to more likely to December or January. I moved it up within the last two years, and we've been doing it more in the October timeframe. But we've never had an updated five-year projection on the adoption of the budget.
Technically, that might be right, but Tom and I in U sat at meetings in February and March where every month would pass and we would have a new updated five-year projection based on the stuff we had already passed.
Correct, but that was also, it was also based on a fiscal year 17 budget that we were in the process of still completing, right? So we didn't change the fiscal year 17 budget when we were looking at those models, right?
We changed it if we had passed something.
We did if you approved something, but the fiscal year 17 budget was the budget we were actually living in. So if we ended up better in a certain area, that wasn't yet updated. Those are some of the things we're going to bring in when we have the audited financials.
So are you claiming we're only going to see the five-year projections once a year?
I say you're only going to see a completely updated five-year projection once a year, and then that's the model we established for the baseline, and we will make changes to it as we did previously throughout the year as other decisions are made.
And what do you think's going to change between now and when we see that?
One, we're uploading all of the updated fiscal year 17 end, so all the things that we have from June, once we complete the audit pieces. In addition, we roll over actual staffing trends. We look at, anybody has submitted a new retirement letter. I mean, there's, even though we talk about four key assumptions, there's probably 150 assumptions that are in there that will have had changes. So we system- So, we systematically go through all of the revenue and all of the expenditure lines and make those adjustments. So, it is refreshed every single year.
When will we receive this?
It's scheduled for the next Finance and Ops Committee. I don't want to confuse my district, so October, November, whenever this went up, prior to the initial conversation on the levy.
November 2nd.
But back to this discussion for one second of the fund balance and how that impacts. This getting back to the 10% in a five-year timeframe is based on the already established five-year projections.
Correct.
And so, if anything, the one that we see in November might show that we're in a higher range.
Correct.
Okay.
Other comments or questions? For the purpose of the community, I'm going to reiterate some of what Tom said. The district right now is projecting to be at about 8%, which is below our 10% threshold. And as Tom said, that was and continues to be a conscious decision of this Board with a lot of discussion, a lot of information from the administrative team, with the recommendation from the administrative team. So, I am not worried about it, and I would encourage the community to know that the Board is absolutely on top of it, as is the admin. And it is not a, "Oh, we're at 8% and we didn't know it." It's a, we're exactly where we expected to be based on a lot of discussions and a lot of information. Thank you, Jen. We now move to Board Committees. First Board Committee Report is the Board Education Committee chaired by Jeff Volker.
Thank you. The Board of Education, or the Education Committee, Board Education Committee, had its first meeting of the school year on Friday, September 15th. In attendance were myself, Suzanne Sands, Rebecca Jenkins, Susan Mills, and our community members Paul Best, Uman Singh, and Julie Agreet. We also had a presentation for Renee Fitzsimmons. The meeting was called order at 8:30. Started out by introducing all of the new Board members and welcoming our community members as well. I then reviewed the committee charter, had a discussion and a recommendation that we'll be voting on later this evening. Rebecca and Susan then took us through a lengthy but meaningful discussion regarding the proposed 2017-2018 strategic plan. Initially, Rebecca helped the committee understand the process that was being used to develop the strategic plan and how many different groups, including the Curriculum Coordinating Committee, the ILT, District Cabinet, et cetera, all worked together to build and shape the strategic projects and focus areas for the coming year. She then led the committee through each milestone of the strategic plan and discussed those specific action steps that pertain to instruction, assessment, talent, technology, and learning spaces. I will not go into the detail that we discussed. We'll be seeing that next month at our Board meeting. So, we'll see this, the outcome at that time. Following that discussion, Susan took us through a quick, or tried to take us through a quick overview of the Curriculum Coordinating Committee, its goals and its structure. Due to time constraints, the committee just watched a brief video that describes the structure and how it's put together. We're going to talk more about that at our next meeting. And then finally, Renee Fitzsimmons, our Teaching and Learning Coordinator, came in to the committee to show a video that describes a new concept being tested in the district called a digital portfolio. The digital portfolio is tied to our student inquiry journey and focuses on students documenting and reflecting upon their work using a digital tool or platform. The digital portfolio would be a student-owned tool versus a class or teacher-owned, so it allows it to travel with the student as they progress throughout the district. There are four essentials to the digital portfolio, and those are the artifacts that are included, reflection that is used by the students, feedback from peers, teachers, or an authentic audience on those artifacts, and the ability to show growth in learning over time. It's worth noting that this portfolio is not intended to be an assessment tool for the student, merely a learning tool for them as they move through the district. This year in particular, the district is choosing a cohort to test this concept. The cohort includes 31 teachers across grades K through eight, and will actually incorporate all seventh and eighth graders, because all of the ELA teachers are going to be part of the cohort. So, every seventh and eighth grade student this year will have access to the digital portfolio that their ELA teachers will help them set up. But as a result, it will also be available across other classes as well. The tools that will be utilized during this test phase are Google Sites, Seesaw, and other applications that can link to either of those two technologies. The benefits of this concept are that they will help students document artifacts or work that they feel are important to them, and that it will travel with them from year to year that will allow students, teachers, and parents to see growth over time. That said, this is not an, as I said, this is not an assessment tool, but a learning tool. We're kind of, according to Renee, we're using the baseline or the foundation that John Dewey, who was an education reformer and philosopher, said that, "We do not learn from experience. We learn from reflecting on experiences." So, one of the benefits of the digital portfolio is it allows students to actually reflect on what they've learned, reflect on their work, which the hope is that that will continue to build upon their learning of the subject and learning of the artifacts. That was it. That was the end of the meeting. We adjourned at 11:10, and our next meeting is scheduled for November 1st at 1:30 PM here in the West Campus in Seminar Room A. Thank you very much.
Questions or comments for Jeff and the Ed Committee?
I have one comment. It may be semantics, and you don't need to go into it now. The report says the Curriculum Coordinating Committee is the governing body for all curriculum oriented decisions. I think that this Board is the only legal governing body. Not to minimize the importance of the Curriculum Coordinating Committee, I understand it's hugely important, but in terms of legal governing bodies, I think you're looking at the only legal governing body that this district has. So, maybe just words.
Any other questions or comments? Let's move on to the Board Finance and Operations chaired by Tom.
Finance and Ops did not meet this month. Our next meeting is scheduled for November 2nd at 7:00 AM on the West Campus.
Questions or comments for Tom? Thank you. Policy. Kent.
As a matter of fact, the Policy Committee met this morning. We're on our 13th hour, I guess now, because we met at 8:00 AM. It was a joint Board meeting with the 115 group also for policy. And the thought is that we're meeting with both 67 and 115 to hopefully better align the policies of the two districts to work in concert with them. That being said, Ellis and Jeff, along with myself, were present at the meeting this morning with Mike and Elaine. And we reviewed certain issues that were in the Press Issue 95 that discussed uniform grievance procedures, instructional materials, orders to forego life-sustaining treatment, which is a great topic first thing in the morning, along with accommodating individuals with disabilities. Certain matters will come in front of the full School Board at future meetings. We also reviewed in Press Issues 94 and 5, certain matters that were coming up for five-year updates. And again, touching on those subjects, so they're edited, reviewed, and at least continued. And we adjourned the meeting as one of our members ran to the 9:24 train this morning, probably at about 9:15. There's no future meeting planned at this point, but we're looking forward to the next one in probably about two months.
Did you make the train? Questions or comments for Kent and the Policy Committee? Thank you, Kent. Compensation Committee, Rob.
Compensation Committee has not met.
Questions or comments for the Compensation Committee? Joint Shared Services Committee has not met since our last Board of, meeting. Board Operating Procedures Committee, Jeff.
The Board Operating Procedures Committee has not met since our last Board meeting. However, we did lead and participate in a Board Workshop on Tuesday, September 19th that focused on finalizing, finally, the Board Operating Procedures Manual in advance of tonight's School Board meeting. The Board Workshop included all members of the Board, as well as Mr. Simic, with the purpose of the meeting being to review and finalize the last three sections of the manual. I am pleased to report that this was accomplished. And as a result, a final draft of the Board Operating Procedures Manual is being presented here tonight for approval and implementation. Upon approval of the Board Operating Procedures Manual, the Board Operating Procedures Committee will hereby be dissolved. And future edits and updates to the manual will be led by the Board Policy Committee. On that note, I would like to thank Kent Novit and Mike Simic for their time over the past year in discussing, developing, writing, and presenting the Board Operating Procedures Manual. I believe we now have a valuable document that will help this Board and future Boards with onboarding, training, and consistency in the application of key processes that are managed by this Board. I would also like to thank my fellow Board members for their input, insight, energy, and importantly, patience during this creation and adoption process. Thank you.
Jeff, I'd just like to thank you for your leadership and your drive to get this done and to have it be done well. I really think having some of the structure that's in this manual as a guideline for how we do our work is critically important and will also continue to be critically important for future Boards.
I would reiterate the thanks. Fantastic work.
Will it reside somewhere that people can access?
Yes, I believe we've talked about having it posted on the website so that the, I mean, one of the, one of the benefactors of this work is hopefully the community, so they can get a better understanding of some of the processes, procedures that we use.
Thank you, Jeff. I too watched how much effort you put into that manual. It was a lot of work. Thanks.
And I spent time, I watched you, I appreciated all the effort, time, and just focus you put in. But as a Board, I'm hoping that as a group, we appreciate what you put in that much more by reviewing this on a yearly basis and continuing the effort that you put in as a starting point. I'm hoping the Boards won't let your effort just kind of wither. So, we owe that to you, and I'm hoping the Board will fulfill.
As Policy Committee Chairman now, Kent, you can control that. So, congratulations.
Other comments? Thank you. Good work. Moving to Liaison Reports. NSSCD Suzanne.
So, the NSSCD Leadership Council met last on August 30th and also held a strategic planning community engagement meeting on September 14th. For more details about the August 30th meeting, I included in my report a Board Brief that is published by the NSSCD administration following each Board meeting, but I only highlight certain things that I discuss here with you all. As far as the strategic planning process goes, in preparation for the community engagement event held on September 14th, NSSCD surveyed parents, staff, administration, Board members, and community members from NSSCD and member districts. Some of the data gathered was then shared with the meeting participants prior to the meeting. And then on September 14th, over 135 people representing all stakeholder groups attended a community engagement meeting to provide input into the strategic planning process. Mixed table groups participated in discussions around key questions in an effort to build table consensus. This information was then documented. And currently, there is a core group of stakeholders who are participating in a series of three meetings to synthesize that input gathered, identify themes, and begin to develop vision and goal areas, as well as some initial objectives in the various goal areas. I have been to two of these core group planning sessions, one earlier today, and we're making considerable progress. The next steps will be to take the work of that group out to the Special Ed Directors, to the superintendents, and to the Advisory Committee of NSSCD for further input and refinement and work at some more, and then do that again. And I believe the goal is still to have something completed by January. In terms of a financial communications plan, as you may recall, NSSCD used what we call the chutes and ladders chart to describe how they spend the year working on developing their budget for the next fiscal year. And that way, they gather input from all stakeholders throughout the year in developing that budget. And when you're trying to develop a budget with 18 different groups, it's helpful to have a lot of communication throughout the year. Finally, the early childhood community preschool partnerships, I had mentioned, I believe, at a previous meeting, those are in play now. And Kristi Crabtree, who is the early childhood administrator, presented an update at our last meeting. NSSCD has partnered with Northfield Community Nursery School and Willowood Preschool in Monarcha. The reason for choosing those two preschool programs is because that is where, that is the community where the students who they needed to place were already living. And the idea of these partnerships is to place students in preschools within their communities rather than pulling them out of their communities to meet, to do their services. This work has required some interesting legal partnerships that have happened. There is NSSCD staff who are placed in those schools, and there are shared agreements about how those students are shared in those placements. So, it's exciting work. The other reason for doing that is that compliance with the ratio of 70% typical peers to no more than 30% students with identified significant needs in a preschool setting, which is something that the state is leading on right now. Our next meeting is October 11th at 7:00 PM.
Questions or comments for Suzanne about NSSCD?
Yeah, I have two quick questions. And Mike, you might have an answer to this as well. Several years ago, there were issues around how each district contributed to the budget of NSSCD that was driving some districts to explore whether or not they wanted to remain in it. Was that resolved to the satisfaction of all districts? I don't recall where that came.
At the end of my term, it was resolved. And a couple districts filed their 18-month notice to depart, and to my knowledge, none of them actually did.
It was Highland Park and someone else, I think, had threatened to do that, and then filed.
Highland Park and Deerfield 109.
Deerfield, right.
They actually both took various levels of action towards that end and have both rescinded those actions and are moving forward. And part of the restructuring of the, what are they called? The cooperative agreement, I believe is what it's called. It's basically the bylaws that holds the cooperative together. That was work that we've been doing at NSSCD for the last couple of years that I've been updating you on periodically. Part of the reason that we did that work was to more clearly articulate what that process looks like, because when those two districts went through that process, a lot of issues arose where the language was not clear and how that was going to play out was not clear. And now, it is much more solidified. As well as this financial plan that I talked about has most districts feeling a lot more comfortable with where their money's going, how it's being used, and why it's, how it's being gotten. There are still discussions around the finances, and the discussion around what non-member districts should be paying for services versus what member districts pay for services that are tuition-oriented services continues to be an ongoing discussion in finance.
Yeah. I have ongoing meetings with all of the area superintendents, and I was, a frequent topic of conversation about who is going to remain in the co-op, who is going to exit. And in the past year, there's been, I think people are at peace or at ease with remaining at this point. To Suzanne's point, the new superintendent there, Dr. Schneider, has really done an exceptional job of putting together a budget that really does address the concerns, both in terms of transparency and also in terms of expenditures that constituent districts had been urging. And then also, I think, has brought a different level of engagement on individual districts' concerns, so that it's very smooth sailing at this point.
My other question was, as we, as a district, and I know 115 have made a conscious effort to try and, whenever possible, keep kids who might otherwise be in NSCD in our home district, are other districts doing that? And is that affecting the long-term budget in terms of the ability to maintain some of the facilities that are being maintained and so forth?
So, I can't give you an exact answer to that question as it's been asked, but what I can tell you is that the strategic planning process, that is at top of mind in this process. At the engagement meeting, one of the pieces of information for people to consider and think about during this process that the superintendent, Dr. Schneider, shared was right now, an overwhelming percentage of NSCD dollars are spent on NSCD programming. I'm not going to get the numbers exactly right, but I think it's to the tune of 27 million, something like that. And a much smaller percentage is spent on services to districts that support districts keeping students in their districts, to the range of 4.8 million or something. And one of the challenges that he put forward to the group was, if we're really doing some of the ideal work that what we're trying to do...
of the ideal work that what we're trying to do, then there should be a shift in the way that NSCD spending is happening. Not that there should be money running out or what, but that the shift should be more money is spent on services and possibly less money needs to be spent on programs. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I would, I don't know if I've said it, I can't remember what I've said to which group, but Lake Forest is now the smallest sender of students to NSCD in the cooperatives. We have a smaller percentage of our kids, both the elementary and high school, in NSCD programs of anybody. So, I think one of the growth areas for NSCD is to become a service agency and how to do that, to provide expertise and coaching and other things and how to bring students back to your district. And to the greatest degree possible, they need to work themselves out of a job, if you will.
But I think that's, in the strategic planning process, the idea is that you wouldn't actually end up working yourself out of a job. It would be that the job would look different than it does today. Like where the resources and money and time is spent will just be different than the way that it is today.
Other questions, comments? Thank you Suzanne. Legislative Liaison, Tom.
All right, everybody's sitting down, but some things have happened in Springfield recently. Senate Bill 1947, which is really a landmark school funding bill passed both chambers in late August. And there's a lot of highlights of the bill and we're actually going to post it on the website. So, those of you that have insomnia or want to get deeper into the details can learn a little bit more about it. But the highlights are basically, SB 1947 dramatically reworks what was considered an outdated formula to fund school districts most in need, to fund schools, period. Districts most in need will receive priority for this new formula, but it must be noted that no district in the state will receive less money this upcoming year than they did before, including Lake Forest. I think, I could be wrong, was it like 1,700 bucks? It's a big number. It's a big number. So, fund balances and things like that will change. Secondly, the part of the whole spend is an additional $350 million going out to schools. One thing that may affect Lake Forest a little bit is that one of the stipulations is it does provide taxpayers with the right to request a voter referendum to lower the property tax rate for a school district. There's a few hurdles that need to be, it's ceded to do this, but it's geared mostly towards some of the wealthier school districts and we'll probably hear a little bit about, more about it down the road. On a more minor note, there's a $75 million fund that's going to be created over the next five years that can be donations to fund for private schools. And finally, there's going to be some TIF financing reform as well as some changes to FISED for K through six and Drivers Ed, some mandate programs. But again, we'll post this on the website. If you have more questions about it, reach out to us and we'll try to answer them the best ways we can. Another bill that passed, and I'm not going to talk about it this month, so stay tuned, was Senate Bill 42. So, I'll keep you in suspense until next month. Thank you.
Any questions other than about Senate Bill 42 for Tom?
So, if I recall, and I don't remember if this ended up being a part of the final bill or not, there was something in there that said something along the lines of if somebody wants to make a donation to that, the pot that goes towards potentially private schools or charter schools, they can write off 75% of that donation against their property taxes?
The tax credit.
The tax credit, correct.
It's an income tax credit.
Right.
That they get.
It's income tax, not property tax?
It's income tax credit.
Okay. That did pass with the bill though?
Yes, that's part of the bill. And that portion of the bill's got a five-year.
State income tax.
And it's got a five-year horizon. So, after five years, there's a sunset on that. So, it's more of a trial.
Other questions for Tom? Nice job, Tom. That's a good report. Spirit of 67 Foundation, Suzanne.
Spirit of 67 Foundation met on Tuesday, September 12th. The big news right now is that they are hosting a thanks for giving luncheon on October 20th from 11:00 to 2:30 at Knollwood Club. All district parents are encouraged to attend as a way to support the work of the Spirit of 67 Foundation. Invitations have gone out and tickets are available through the Spirit of 67 Foundation website. Around the same time, there is a raise your hand for education online auction. So, those who can't participate in the luncheon can support the work of the Spirit, October 17th through 20th. That auction will close at noon during the luncheon. This year, the donor relations team on the Spirit has started a friendly school giving contest. And any school that reaches an 80% participation rate among families will win an awesome school ride treat party that is allergy-friendly, of course. The contest results as of August 31st were that Cherokee was at 39.3%, Everett 28.5%, Sheridan 42.6% and DPM 28.5%. The overall participation across the district right now is 35%. It's down from 36.8% last year at the same time, but the average dollar amount per donation is up slightly. Oh, and my report says the wrong thing. The next meeting will not be May 23rd. It will be, give me a second. I believe it will be October, yeah, 10th at 9:00 AM in this room.
Thank you Suzanne. Any questions on Spirit of 67? Next up, Executive APT Jeff.
The District 67 Executive APT Board held a inaugural meeting of the school year this past, or one Wednesday, September 13th here at the West Campus. Highlights included Mr. Simick providing a superintendent's report where he updated the board on the various facility updates across the district, talked about the upcoming district meetings around finances, the proposed personalized student profile and the visiting author on how to raise an adult in December. The new board president, Desiree Witty, welcomed everyone and announced that this year's APT theme is "You Are Stronger Than You Realize." She also thanked Beth Loffenberg for her help in designing a new APT logo, which is very good, very nice. And speaking of Beth, she, as Membership and Directory Chair, announced that of the 1,031 families in District 67, 928 had joined the APT during registration. So, that's a participation rate of 90% right off the bat. So, congratulations for that. She also announced that of the 1,668 students in the district, 1,619 were actually in the student directory. So, 97% of the kids in the district are actually in the directory, which is helpful because it's nice for kids to be able to contact other kids. So, that's great. All the buildings are off to a great start. All the school packs were delivered, yard signs were planted, curriculum nights were held, back-to-school gatherings and new family events were pulled off and the kindergarten playdates, they all went off without a hitch. So, everything's off to a good start. Both DPM and Everett also underwent changes and updates to their websites. Lastly, the Fine Arts program, A Barrel of Monkeys, which was first started last year, you heard me talk about it last year, it's back again this year. So, the group will be coming in and meeting with all of the fourth graders in mid-October to help them write their stories and then they'll come back in December and based on those stories, actually act them out, which is really a cool program. And Alice McGinty, a children's author, will be in the elementary buildings in mid-October as our first visiting author of the school year. The next APT Executive Board meeting will be on Wednesday, October 11th here at West Campus. Thank you.
Both of those things are funded by the Spirit, just so you know.
And they are funded by the Spirit. All Fine Arts and visiting author, yes.
Questions for Jeff? Thank you. Any other liaison reports I've missed? Move on to our second public participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? Please go to the podium and say your name and address. Thank you.
Hello. Paul Markoff, 1204 South Wilson. Since everybody's questioning Jen, this is more directed for her probably. On the ATSB report that the board is voting on tonight, I was a little confused on, first of all, most of the shared services don't show up at all. And on the cover letter, it says that it's not supposed to, I guess not supposed to include all shared services except for the superintendent, but they don't show up anywhere. And on the superintendent, Mr. Simick shows up on both, 115 and 67, but the other, I guess the assistant superintendents, you and Ms. Jenkins, only show up on 67 and not 115. So, I'm just, if you could maybe give an explanation on where the shared services, if it gets discussed, of course, on the action items, where the shared services show up and why the two assistant superintendents or associate, whatever your titles are, show up only on 67 as opposed to 115. I'd appreciate that.
So, thank you. As a rule, we don't answer questions, but we listen, but it is quite possible that one of us may ask that question during the action items. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to address the board? Seeing none, we move on to the action items. Our first item, may I have a motion to adopt the 2017-2018 budget?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion regarding the 2017-18 budget? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Borowski?
Aye.
Mr. Novak?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the Administrator and Teacher Salary and Benefit Report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Jen had a question that Paul actually took the words right off my sheet. If you could answer that, that'd be so helpful.
And I'm actually going to defer to Brittany, who actually completes the report.
To answer that question, the ATSB report has specific requirements that are outlined by the State of Illinois. We reported in a dashboard system. Their system currently at this time only allows us to split the superintendent. Actually, every year I have to report him at 67. Mark Hobnack from the state calls me and says, "Brittany, where's your superintendent at 115?" And I said, "Remember, we're shared service." He says, "Oh, yes, let me fix that behind the scenes for you." Then I tell him, "We also have assistant superintendents." And he says, "Well, that's not a requirement of this report, so please report them on their home district." So, as Ms. Hermes and Ms. Jenkins are home District 67 employees, they show up 100% at 67. Per requirement of the state cannot show up on 115 because that's not their hiring district.
Thank you. Other comments or questions?
So, this came up last year exactly, Paul. And last year, I will say the same thing. I actually think the, we put this on the web anyway, right? So, if you want to, you can go to 115 and now everyone who's shared service gets paid 50/50 from the two districts, except one person. I don't know who the one person is.
And that person is not on this report because he's not certified. Only certified employees show up on this report.
But, so like if you know who's shared service is from, you know, you can go to the 115 report and get half their salary. That's what we pay. So, I will say again, I think for the board's work, we should be given that sheet. I don't care what the state tells us to do. Let's have the sheet, but that's okay.
Other questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Novak?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Borowski?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the Education Committee Charter?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Discussion?
The charter has not changed significantly at all, really, from what has already been on the books, other than to update committee members.
Other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Just to clarify.
Oh, sorry. Kent?
We could have put, maybe we couldn't have. I would have put them in the consent.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Novak?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Borowski?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the Finance and Operations Committee Charter?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Borowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Novak?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
May I have a motion to approve the Policy Committee Charter as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Novak?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Borowski?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the Board Operating Procedures Manual as presented?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions or comments or discussion?
I would like to point out a couple of things since our last meeting. Section 3.7 that dealt with filling a board vacancy. There were some small changes made based on our conversation. I made sure that the term recommended was incorporated as we had wished. I also changed some verbiage to show that if the board needed more than one or two rounds of interviews in order to fill the vacancy, that they had the liberty to do so. So, I want to make sure that everyone's aware of that. I would like to reiterate for the public as well as for the board, this document, we started development of it over a year ago and it's based off of work that had been done at Mr. Simick's prior district in Michigan, in Berkeley, Michigan. We felt that it added tremendous value, particularly when it comes to helping new board members onboard as well as new administrators. It is, we are unique in Illinois in that the school code does a very thorough job of articulating a lot of what was actually in the Berkeley manual. So, you'll notice as people look through the procedures manual, we cross-reference policy whenever possible. That being said, what we're adopting tonight is not policy. So, anything that is in there, if it can be shown at some point that policy overrides it or supersedes it, policy always wins. And then we'll have to go back and update the procedures manual to reflect any of those Going forward, there's no requirement that any changes be made or any changes made be adopted or approved by the board. However, we all agree that we thought it was a good idea just to make sure that we were all in alignment with the procedures. If there are any changes, we will run them by the board for approval. So, thank you again for everybody's hard work in getting this finished. And I think we have a very good, solid foundation upon which to build. And I think it's a good example of my axiom of perfect is the enemy of good. And this is not necessarily perfect, but I think it's pretty darn good. So, thank you all.
Excellent. I've said it before, but it bears repeating. I think you've really, really done a great job with this, Jeff, in taking what was a good document from my last life and bringing it to a new and better level and particularly making it a local level is something we talked about in the cabinet meeting today. And we're going to print that off and it's going to be required reading for all of our cabinet members. And it's actually a terrific onboarding document for new administrators, not just board members as well. And anybody that wants to find out, hey, how does a board actually work? It's much more layman's terms than any other thing about what the school board's work is. So, if anybody out there is interested in reading these things, Paul, you're an assiduous reader. I'm sure you'll read it twice before even home tonight. But it really is, it's very, very well done and you just did a masterful job of keeping us on track.
Other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Borowski?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Novak?
Aye.
Motion carries.
May I have a motion to dismiss probationary educational support personnel employee Brittany Miller based on the recommendation of the superintendent?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Borowski?
Aye.
Mr. Novak?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Borowski?
Aye.
Mr. Novak?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We move to the consent agenda. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of a board member. I'll now read the items on the consent agenda. Approval of dispersment payroll and financial statements dated July and August 2017. Minutes of a regular meeting and workshop, August 22nd, 2017. Minutes of an executive session, August 22nd, 2017. Minutes of a joint board workshop executive session, September 12th, 2017. Minutes of a board workshop, September 19th, 2017. Disposal of audio recording, November 12th and 17th, 2015. Any board member want any of those items removed? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as just read?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second.